It is 7:04. I'm going to call this meeting to order, the College Station ISD School Board of Trustees. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all the pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a public meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of our school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. We have seven members present. That gives us a quorum. Before we move to Item C, I still have like a minute or two as president. I'd like to adjust the agenda. I don't know if I can do that, but I'm going to. And I'm going to bring up D3, just because my daughters are here today. I want to recognize the artwork at the back of the room. Some of it's from Pebble Creek Elementary, but the other one is from College Hills where they both attended. So I think that's the little thing that makes my heart go pitter patter. At this point, we will move to Item C, Elections. Mr. Martindale, my last time.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. I have to admit, when you wanted to adjust the agenda, my heart turned back. So it's evening of bringing folks, new folks to board, and swearing in on the Senate, and also evening of saying goodbye. When we start the evening with administering our oath of office to our elected board members for our November 13th election, we will start with Page Six. First, the time of call, because the hall will come forward, and I believe your mother is going to be here. Is that correct? I just want to know. Respect me. In the name of our Lord and His Prayer.
I don't think that, I don't see any eyes.
I am honored. 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 I believe your daughter is administering laws, correct?
You have mine, too, in my life. You have a very good one.
Let's get to it, first. Chris Horrigan, how many?
I gave him.
Oh, you don't?
Definitely did she. Okay.
I would have been first, but my daughter has said. You are. I don't want to be. Don't want to be. I have to get pictures. I am Carolyn Nolan. I am Carolyn Nolan. If all were fair or unfair, if all were fair or unfair, then I will faithfully execute the duty of the College Station Board of Directors in Page Seven. And I will faithfully execute the duty of the Office of College Station Board of Directors in Page Seven. By the State of Texas. And will to prevent my ability to inherit protect and maintain the Constitution. And will prevent my ability to inherit protect and maintain the Constitution. And laws of the United States. Laws of the United States. And of the State. 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 And of the State.
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Schaefer if he transitioned away on the first row, but he already did. So, no. Sir Hall, there you go. Let me sit next to him for the time being, watch the board. So, you'll think that we're there, then, at this point in time, I believe we are Item B, doing one, our pledge, and moment of solace. Or that item, or like to follow forward, our principal on Pebble Creek, this Friday, and this provides our assistant principal from College Hills, which are due to our students for the later part of the session, moment of solace this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I am covering the week tonight, two of our fourth graders from College Hills Elementary. I am Patrick McNeely. Patrick plays football, and he is one of our ABA ambassadors at College Hills Elementary. Our ABA ambassadors are chosen based on their leadership role and their ability to show the way for our other students that are leaders on campus. Also have Kiera Wright. She's also one of our fourth grade students. Her favorite subject is science, and she's also one of our ABA ambassadors.
Good evening. I have Faith Lee. She is a fourth grader from Pebble Creek Elementary. She can find this school to come to her, and she's seen her books full-time at her fourth grade, Pebble Creek Elementary. Faith loves going to the beach. She loves to play soccer. She's a friend to everyone. And Ms. Lynn, she is an athlete. She shows peppers, super cool kids. I asked her, because I thought, how cool to be here with your teachers, have to say about you. I'm going to read a little bit her way. Faith is a hard worker. She finds it everyone. She has classes and uplifting in the classroom. She has such a smile that's contained even under her blouse, which I'm sure you can see right now. Lynn is full of wit and is a hard worker. He works hard to understand building times. He needs sure that other people, others can have their things to be the helper in class. He is a quiet leader with some humor that will be out of nowhere, and he makes the class seem flat every day. But thank you both for representing Pebble Creek Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where our wishes stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please hold me for a moment, silence. I'll give it to him. That moves us to Item D2. Can I go up there? Okay. Okay. And this one's already on. So, Item D2. Where'd he go? There he is!
It did not take him long to turn.
No kidding. He took off, huh? So, this is where we get to celebrate you and thank you for your years of service and honor you, Mr. Schaefer. So, thank you for serving on College Station School Board for six years. And I'm going to give everybody a chance to talk. But first, so we were, you know, thinking of what we could do as a board to show you our appreciation, and we decided that a little token of our appreciation for your years of service. It'd be good to talk to our, you know, somebody that, or a group that you championed and that you were passionate about. And so, we landed on our CTE programs. Were we correct in this? Yes. Yay! So, we reached out to Mr. King, who is not here tonight, and he's wonderful to work with. He is a gem. Anyways, he worked with us and with Brian, CTE, they collaborated, and we have a gift for you that I think you're going to like. If not, I mean, it has your name on it, but I really like it.
Two hands.
Yes, and it's a good thing that, it is so heavy. It is so very heavy. But these guys, these guys designed it, and I mean, we just said we wanted something original.
That's you.
Isn't it? It's really heavy. It's really heavy.
I mean, it's hard. I mean, this is white look right here. I'm a builder.
That's exactly what I said. I was like, he's a builder. He knows how to do that. But we were hoping that, and when I saw that, I mean, they did everything, the students and the teachers over there. So, we hope you enjoy that, and again, thank you for your years of service. I'm wondering who's going to tell the jokes now, though. You're going to have to text or email us some well-placed puns so that we can, you know, break the tension with your humor. Again, thank you, Michael, for, you know, giving so much time for the past six years and serving the school district and this community with your time and energy, and we really appreciate you. Who's next? Whoever wants to be next.
I think we might all be saying something, but you and I've talked over the last year. This is my first year, obviously, and it's like I've told you probably numerous times, thank you for being a leader and being someone I could look up to and how passing the torch to the future of what CSISD is and your passion for it, because that's what you and I've talked about. Passion is what drives you. So, I appreciate that. I wish you the best. Don't be a stranger.
Michael, I just want to say thank you for all that you have done for the school district. You were my first friend on the board, and so I appreciate your friendship and your mentorship. What I think I appreciate about you most over these last couple of years is watching, truly, you always bringing it back to kind of reality and the students, the staff, the faculty. It's really been your complete focus, and I truly appreciate you've been so dedicated to this district, and we are a better place for it, and I just want to thank you. Thank you for your service.
Well, we just spoke yesterday for the first time ever. So, what can I say?
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah, well, you just stole what I was, so I do have big shoes to fill, because I do know from others that you have great passion for this district, and you continue, and that's the reason you called me, because you have passion. You wanted to make sure the shoes were going to be a good fit. So, thank you so much.
Well, just thank you, Michael. Again, six years is a long time to devote, it is a lot of time to devote to our community and particularly our school district, so thank you for that time. You have offered a lot to this board and this district in many ways, and I have enjoyed your sense of humor on the board and certainly, and also when you really show your heart, which definitely happens, and we know, I mean, that, you got that in there, too. So, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Oh, Mr. Schaefer, from one Brennan boy to another, thank you very much for, as everybody said, your service to the district, your passion for the district. This is kind of a sad night for me on both a board level and on a personal level. On a personal level, this means now officially now the baldest guy on the board. But.
You haven't been a couple of years.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. So, I'll survive. But as far as board service, like Mr. Horak, this is my first year on the board, and obviously, it's been a year like no other between, you know, our new superintendent and COVID. And you have displayed a steady hand throughout that, and I think we all benefited from that. The district benefited from that, and so, just like everybody else said, thank you again for your service.
Mr. Schaefer, five years ago, I came in here, and we had never met, and we had spoken on the phone, I believe, and that was it. And it has been an incredible five years. Getting to know you sounds very trite and doesn't quite cover it, because I feel like you have come to mean so much to me, and I've been kind of dreading this night, knowing that you wouldn't be across the room for a glance every now and then after tonight, and saying goodbye to you in this capacity at least. And, you know, we, I feel like we've developed a pretty deep relationship, really a brotherhood, and you have come to mean so much to me and my family. And, you know, everyone else has talked about what, you know, your service, which has been incredible, and your passion, and I'm so glad that word has been used by literally everyone up here tonight, even someone who's known you for 24 hours, because that's who you are. You're passionate about your community and your family and education, and you have served this community and its families so well, and we all thank you and appreciate you for that. But I, it's more personal for me tonight when I think back on things that have nothing to do with what happens in this room, where your heart comes out. When my wife became ill and you and Sandra were so kind, providing food, one of my favorite pictures of my daughter is when she walked in and saw the food prepared, and she's like, wait, Dad's not getting pizza tonight. We're actually eating, and this was glorious. I think I even sent you the picture. But you do so many little things that really aren't little, but they're big for those people around you, and when I, what I've seen from you is that you are perhaps the most loyal and generous person that I've ever met, and you're generous with everything that you have, especially your time. We've had some level four conversations, and as we have shared things, especially like with our, about our fathers, and not just about losing our fathers, but about the life we had with them. In fact, I just, I want to share this with you. When I rushed home to change and to get a jacket and look nice for tonight, and you get this. You get this shirt. But as I was grabbing my jacket, I saw it, and it was a shirt that my stepmother gave me after my father passed, and I thought, I want to honor him with it, but you, because of our past and our conversations about those things, those things that are important. And there are so many urgent things that pop up every now and then, and you have, as Ms. Green said, you bring it back to reality. You focus on the important things. And as I believe I was back there with Ms. Green when you walked through, and I said, who are you going to have here tonight? You said your family, and I wondered who that is, because your family is much bigger than your girls and your bride, and I mean, there's Mikey back there as always, and, you know, and future family members. You have, everyone's your family, and I have learned so much from you with the heart that you extend to others, and you are, it was a delight to serve with you. And I thank you for your leadership, for your service, and most importantly, I thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your friendship. And I just would like to say that I wish you nothing but happiness moving forward. I know you have, I'm trying to talk forever, and I'm doing a good job. I don't know what time your reservation is. No. But I'd like to simply just, you said this morning, when you, I got my last morning phone call of a meeting, and you said you're going to throw up a prayer for me today, and as always, it's appreciated, but I'd just like to offer a blessing and ask that the Lord bless you and keep you and your family. May he make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. May the Lord lift his countenance on you and give you peace. Thank you again, my friend.
Mr. Schaefer, before I give the floor to you, here's a small opening of appreciation from the school district. I would like to present Michael Schaefer, first years of dedicated service to the education of children, College Station ISD Board of Directors, thirteen, six years of service. And so, I think over those six years, $137 million bond, three new campuses, are resuming with four, two, and a pandemic, so, okay. So, a full tenure, for sure. And I don't want to, of course, I'm going to have to additionally thank you for your service, but it's super independent, thank you. I spoke to Michael Moore during our initial closing in my home life, as was, you know, entering into the pandemic, and often she'd see me on the call, who are you talking to, Mr. Schaefer? And eventually, over a course of time, Jenny asked, presumably, who are you talking to? But I feel that because during that time, there's time for all of us, and our community and our district, and finally decided what's right and how to finish the school year, and conversation about how to start the school year. When we spoke, you always gently asked me the right questions and prompted me along where I needed to be and helped keep me focused, provided guidance with grace, and I very appreciate that, your support and your friendship and your confidence and me and all of our administrators and all that in itself. We would not have been there last year as we have been, nor would we have gotten things open the way we do. As an example, I believe, for many practices, the directors of both the units, and me, they have understanding and guidance from the units, and that policy forever, that's important. So, thank you very much. I don't know that that one's working so well, so go to this one.
I was told I have 30 minutes, but I'll see if I can do it in 25. A lot of this I'm going to read, but a lot of it comes from my heart. This has been my home for the third Tuesday of every month. Mr. Martindale, we have done five schools in five years. We currently have $160 million budget. We have purchased three tracts of land. We have one bond package. Had two boundary adjustments, which, I mean, that's the reason I'm bald. With those, we got FC Local. The National Merit Scholars, I mean, that we have at College Station ISD is, I mean, really makes me proud. We had one superintendent search. We had one pandemic so far. Well, I guess I'm good at this point, and it's probably taken me six years to learn all the acronyms, and I still don't think I have those down pat. One of the things that misdraws, I was going to get you a couple of times since you're in charge of the money, but one of the things that struck me, and I had it on my notes, but if y'all can, go back and look at the tax rates for every year I've been here. I'm leaving with the lowest tax rates, and so, I think that's good, and I'll use it for political endeavor down the road. But what a year this has been. Mr. Martindale, I mean, this was supposed to be a quiet year. I can still recall when Clark Ely called me, it was on a Friday, me and Sandra were going to Dallas, and he said, Michael, I need to talk to you. And I said, Clark, I mean, we are, I'm running late, I was supposed to be home at 1:00. It's like 2:30, and he goes, Michael, I need to talk to you. And I said, Clark, I really don't have time today. And he said, Michael, I got to, and so, talk to you. So, we're getting in the car, and I'm telling Sandra, and at this point, I'm thinking, what have I done? I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, because it was, he was very affirmative that I had to come see him. I remember the news, and, I mean, I was literally shocked when he told me that he was a finalist for another job. And I remember he started the meeting saying, Michael, there's two things that I need to talk to you about. And so, I forgot the second one, because the first one was so dramatic. And then, you know, it took five, 10 minutes, and I got that, and I said, okay, you're sure? And he goes, I'm sure. And I said, oh, thank goodness we got Martindale. And he said, Michael, there's two things I said I need to talk to you about. And I said, well, what's the second one? It can't get worse than the first one. And he said, Martindale's the finalist for another superintendent job, and on Tuesday, he's going to be named the sole finalist. And I said, well, Clark, this is great. I said, we're two, three weeks in, it's me being board president, and we lose the top two guys. And I said, that's horrible. We were very fortunate that we had Martindale here. He spoke to one of my classes, and the leadership skills that he has, I'm a firm believer, you leave things better than you found them, and guys, there was nothing wrong with Dr. Ely, but I mean, the future is bright at College Station ISD. Some of the things that are on the horizon almost makes me want to stay. I mean, there's so much excitement that's coming up. You know, life opens up many doors. A lot of the comments that y'all made here, I look back tonight, I'm thinking, none of y'all were here when I first got on the board, and, you know, life does open up new doors, and, you know, this is the way it's intended to be. I'm a firm believer in term limits, and I knew the time was coming, but I want you to know that there's much more ahead. In closing, which I got three more pages, but in closing, one of the things that I really want to do is I want to thank the teachers of College Station ISD. I mean, they're in the front lines. I mean, this, you know, teachers and kids is one of the reasons I'm here, and I want to thank them for what all they do for College Station ISD, regardless of any of the conferences we go to, College Station ISD. I mean, people, you know, hook up to us, and I mean, we are definitely a role model. Also want to thank our principals. I mean, when you go onto a campus at College Station ISD, you can tell the principal at that particular campus, I mean, she you can tell the principal of that particular campus, I mean, she loves, he or she loves what they do. And you can tell it in the hallway when you walk in, and you can definitely tell it in each of the classrooms. The next one, this is going to be more like a roast. I think I've talked enough about Mr. Martindale, but Amy, I mean, it's, you've only been here a year, but I mean, for what you've brought to this school district, your past experience, I mean, really, really, really want to thank you for what you do every day. Dr. Trammell, for what you've done for the educational initiatives. I mean, you really have brought us up a couple of notches, and I really want to thank you for your leadership in that role. Ms. Perry, everything that you do. I know that there's still a tie between you and Dr. Trammell on the PowerPoint slides, but I think y'all can, if somebody can just keep the tally on those, I'd appreciate it. Chuck, all that you do for sharing the good things that College Station ISD does. I think you're one of the best of what you do. In between the superintendents, getting the message out of what, being transparent on everything we do. I mean, that really means a lot as a community. Chrissy, you didn't think I was going to forget about you, did I? Did you? Okay. Chrissy is just a knowledge. You know, I haven't had much chance to really work with her, but if anything ever had to be done, Chrissy knows. Chrissy, thank you for your years of service to College Station ISD. Mr. Mann, in your new role, I want to appreciate all that you do. Ms. Horn, I know you didn't think I was going to forget you. Always smiles, always keeps me on task of when, you know, I don't think she realizes that I'm usually about 10 minutes behind her, but she always, hey, Michael, can you, can you, can you? And so, thank you for that little prodding. Teresa Binden's not here, but guys, College Station Education Foundation, what she has, what she does is totally amazing, the amount of support and from the community that she goes. Hector Silva, he's not here, but I mean, one of the things that I have been very passionate about when we went through some of the rezonings and boundary adjustments was the time that students spent on the bus. That wasn't just words to me, but that was very passionate to me about the time that kids spend on buses. And probably at this point, you know, parents spending their kids on those buses, and us having a great transportation system. Brazos County Sheriff's Department for everything they do. John Hall, some of the events that have taken place in Texas public schools. John Hall and the safety programs that he has. The stuff that he does behind the scenes, I mean, very appreciative of all he does. Tiffany Parkinson and her new role. Hope, yeah, I guess that's on another agenda, I don't want to steal that thunder. The picture here, Kevin Ross with the CT program, he's a good addition to College Station ISD. I know I'm stormy, I see you back there. There's so many of y'all that have done, you know, have made College Station ISD what it is today, and I appreciate everything that y'all have done. In leaving, I've been thinking a lot. And one of the things that, as I said earlier, I like to leave things better than I found them. And I have been reflecting, and so what I would like to do is, I'm going to read something to all the board members, and I don't want you looking at me, but if you could just, and I'm, you know, me, I don't talk slow, but I'm going to try to read slow. But if you can, just close your eyes, and I'm going to talk about time, talent, and treasure. And I think that's what, of a lot of what we do here today. So if you could just pacify me and just, time. Your gift of time is unique, because you are the only one that can give it. Our time begins at birth and ends on this earth with death. For most of us, it's 25,000 days. Our time is precious and cannot be stored like the hay or grain in barns. College Station ISD is blessed that each of you are giving your time, but let's always remember that once a moment passes, it's gone forever. Talent. These talents and gifts are not given to us just for our own use, but are given for the enrichment of the lives and others, and so that we can serve God better. We have amazing talent on this board, which serves as a catalyst of making the district the best it can be. Treasure. Our Creator wants us to give some percentage of what is received must be returned to Him as an act of gratitude. We all have heard about the 10% path. There needs to be some sharing of our money and our material goods for those in need in our family, our community, and the world. It's truly amazing the treasure that each of you have given, not only to the programs, whether it's academic, fine arts, athletics, PTOs, and let's not forget the CSISD Foundation, as well as Christie's Closets. Success, each life, each day, each hour. Thank you, and God bless you all. All right, I'll be back here for executive.
Thank you, Mr. Shafer.
Are you taking this? This is okay for me to take?
Yes, that's yours, and.
The last time somebody told me I can take a sign, they'd have worked up to you.
Oh, wow. Oh, wait, this is also yours. Hey, come get this too. And while he's doing that, I owe an apology. While he's doing that, I owe an apology to Mr. Ross. I called him Mr. King earlier. I think I must have been thinking about Ross King, the musician. I don't know, my kids and I used to listen to that music all the time. It's a good-looking family. Thank you once again. Have fun at dinner.
Yeah, we'll be at dinner in a few minutes.
There you go. There you go. Okay, so, do I skip? You see, he's already messed it up for me. Do I skip D3, or? You know what, I'm going to go with D3. Mr. Shafer already recognized the artwork on the back wall. But again, it's by College Hills Elementary in Pebble Creek. If you'd like, take the time, I think you should. I mean, I can see it from here, and it's pretty amazing work. So thank you to our artists. So next is E consent agenda. So on our consent agenda tonight is H, K2, K3, K4, and that's it. Would anyone like to remove anything from consent for discussion? Okay, if not, do we have a motion?
A motion to accept consent agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, 7-0. Okay, that takes us to F1, Board Directions and Announcements from Superintendent and Board Members. Do we have any reports?
I've got a quick one. Tomorrow is the annual Grant Patrol for the Education Foundation. Forty-five grants will be awarded tomorrow totaling $172,000. Mr. Shafer mentioned the greatness of Teresa Binden and the Education Foundation. There you go. Pretty great.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Did I get that right, Mr. Horak?
That is correct, yes.
Head Start Policy Council met last week again, and, you know, just, everybody should have the report that was sent out, and I think, I think it comes out in transmission. But just to point out the couple of things, that the waitlist is continuing to grow for both the early Head Start and the Head Start, which is, you know, a good and a bad thing. There's, people are wanting to come to the schools, but we are full for those two programs. And the pre-K numbers are also inching up, not where they were in the spring, pre-COVID, but they're inching up. And then the other thing to point out is if you look at the report this week or this month, they actually did some graphs talking about their beginning-of-year assessments that they do every year. And it was, and we talked about it a lot, it was really interesting that those initial numbers for the kids coming into their programs for the first time, their, both their reading and math, or it's not reading, it's phonological awareness. You know, these are three- and four-year-olds. Those numbers were lower than they had been in the previous two years. And they really believe that that is, can be attributed just to some of the gap with COVID. And even with young, very young kids, that they are, they weren't getting out of the house. They weren't having some of the experiences and the language that they were used to, not going to the library as much. And so, I mean, it was interesting, interesting to see. And I even asked specifically, is the testing, you know, like we've seen, we've heard that MAP testing may have some differences this year, but they said their testing was very consistent. They were, you know, so it's, it'll be interesting to see. But it is a baseline of when the kids enter the program, and so obviously, that's why they're in the program, to increase those numbers. So just wanted to share that.
Unfortunately, I missed the PAC meeting, but I'll just kind of go over a few items from the minutes. And then, Mr. Martindale, if you want to jump in at any point. But some of the employee concerns that were raised involved, you know, just more questions about rezoning capacity at the different schools, which Mr. Martindale, I think, did a good job of explaining, and also pointing those who had questions to our annual enrollment review and report. There were some additional questions about the instructional model and how many times kids could go back and forth if they could. And I guess there's some discussion about limiting that possibly in the spring. There were also questions concerning pay rates for coaches who are driving buses, the use of styrofoam in the cafeterias. And then last, Ms. Perry gave a announcement, a presentation on the teacher incentive allotments and how those could be used over the next couple of years. And that was, that was pretty much it. It sounds like it was a fairly short meeting.
DEIC was pretty much everything Dr. Trammell talked about earlier in the workshop. Pretty much the calendar was the main focus on that. And then Ms. Perry started conversations about the teacher incentive allotment program that's in discussion and in the works.
Yeah, I can talk about Shaq. Shaq met for the first time a couple of weeks ago, and it was really just a get-together meeting again, and to kind of go over what they recommended, to talk again about what they recommended to the board last April, and to start the discussion on what the recommendations might be this year, or what they want to pursue, look into for recommendations in April of '21. We did have a couple of speakers, or we had a speaker that, she was pretty informative, talking about, she was from the Health Advisory. And one of the things that she said that has stuck with me, that I keep remembering and thinking about is that we can get COVID and flu at the same time. So just FYI. Right, wear your mask, wash your hands.
Can I just follow up on the Shaq? Also, that, I mean, at this point, we're just looking at people, the parents on the Shaq committee are kind of supposed to go out and talk to their schools, talk to parents about concerns that they have that are health-related, you know? So if anybody out there does have those, get them to Shaq, maybe funnel them, a Shaq member or funnel them through your board member, and we can get them to Shaq, you know, to discuss throughout the year.
Any other board reports?
Amanda, do you want to, about Monday?
Go right ahead.
The IGC. So the Intergovernmental Relations Committee met yesterday, and, is it yesterday? My gosh.
It was.
Wow, it feels like a week ago. And we had Representative Rainey and Representative Cassell just come speak to us regarding the legislative session. I'll be honest with you, it was very difficult to hear. I don't know if you picked up on everything that they talked about, but one of the, one of the things that they had mentioned is that we will be in the state of Texas redrawing district lines. So it's that time of, that time has come. And that they will begin session in January. And a question was asked about if the committee assignments, because it's very important what committees they serve, have not yet been determined, but will be in February. So I don't know if I missed any key things.
I would say just that it was nice to hear that the first thing out of Rainey's mouth was that, you know, priorities, his priority will be education funding. So that was, that was good. And I guess I'll go ahead and mention it's the Short Term Committee, but the Teacher Incentive Allotment Committee did meet last, that was just last week for the first time, a kind of a kickoff meeting. And with, led by Ms. Perry and Ms. Hickman together, we did a great job. It's a big group of teachers primarily, and some administrators as well, really to start that process of figuring out what our plan will be for that teacher incentive plan. And it's complex, I'll just say that. There's a lot of little options. We looked at some, we looked at plans from different districts and kind of discussed pros and cons of some of those as a starting point. So that's just the kickoff for that one.
Very good. I'll follow up on a couple of those, as Mr. Mann mentioned at PAC. One of the agenda items had to do with enrollment at one of our intermediates relative to the other two, as well as the middle school. And so I just kind of went through the process to let them know, more to educate the group that we review that on an annual basis. The demographer comes in, we take a look at all those types of things, and they drive our decision-making for the future. So have the opportunity to just kind of share with that group, and let them know we'd be going through that process as a team next month. Also, Intergovernmental Council, and that is Zoom, and they have folks in person, so it is difficult to hear at different times. But Representatives Rainey and Cassell were there. And Kimberly, as Kimberly mentioned, the first thing that Representative Rainey referenced was school finance, along with another, several other things. Connectivity, which we discussed earlier. And actually, the regional mobility was a conversation that they both, or a topic they both spoke to during IGC, and that was yesterday. So I understand, though. A superintendent's update, let me just give you a few numbers, not as many as usual, so I didn't prepare, or I'm not going to utilize a PowerPoint. Active cases, and I released the video last week. And of course, these numbers move on us on a daily basis, but just to kind of give the community an update as to where we were. But as of last Friday, active employee cases of COVID were at 22. Twenty-two active employees. And a reminder, we have over 2,000 employees in our system, in our facilities on a daily basis. As far as students, we have 48 active cases. Our enrollment on campus, and this is folks that come in the building, not all of our collective students in our buildings, were at 82.5% as a school district, or a little bit over 11,300 kids. So that's where we are as of last Friday. I will tell you, as I mentioned to Citywide earlier today, and even on our weekly call with the Health Department and those folks. Yesterday, we had a couple of active cases added to the list. And yesterday, Monday, yesterday, as opposed to the previous two Mondays, was much improved. So we'll see if that continues, whether this had to do with Halloween or whatever the case may be. Dr. Sullivan calls it COVID fatigue also, where people get tired of masks and those types of things. And that can contribute to the uptick. Obviously, the community's experiencing, but also us as a district the last couple of weeks. But again, yesterday, in a day, we're better than the previous two weeks of. But again, yesterday and a day were better than the previous two weeks of Monday and Tuesday, knock on wood. And I probably just jinxed this for the rest of the week. But also, through this process and how we manage this, is we really manage it by classroom and by campus. And the board knows, and I've shared this information with you, and we worked up some percentages to initiate the conversations with the Health Department, and they helped us with identifying these thresholds of 10% in a classroom or a particular area of a building, and 3% for our facility. Since we opened August the 18th, we have closed four different classrooms through the course of current time, and those were in four different locations. And that has served us in the, in the active cases we may see pick up in a particular location and has worked thus far in isolating those particular instances. So, we'll continue to approach that as we have. I can't tell you that really, when I speak to the Health Department or the community, anyone is necessarily surprised with the uptick at this time of the year, is a little bit anticipated. So, I think it's just all the more important that we stay locked in our protocol and those types of things. I want to kind of go off of those. What we have noticed through the course of the first semester, if we met with principals and we have weekly meetings with each level, is through our first couple of grading cycles at the secondary level, I will say it's pretty consistent at the elementary level, but the secondary level, that our failure rate among our virtual students is significantly higher than those that are on-site. We have, and our principals work diligently in our campuses and reaching out and trying to work with those students that are virtual students, that are not being successful, try to intervene, encourage them to return to campus, to try to support them, not let them get too far behind. And in a number of cases, and we have a lot of kids being successful, but a number of those that aren't being successful, quite honestly boils down to lack of effort, just completely failing to engage. A few weeks ago, TEA gave authority to school districts to require students that are virtual students that are failing one or more courses or have, or not engaging or have poor attendance from a virtual standpoint, to require those students to return on-site. We have been just strongly encouraging and trying to coach people back if they're not being successful. As we move into the second semester, though, if we have kiddos that have continued to not be successful, we're going to require them to return if they're virtual students. But we can't allow them to get any farther behind. And again, this would be students that are virtually, that are failing one or more classes. So, we'll take advantage of that that has been provided to us by TEA. And again, they communicated that just the last, probably two weeks ago. Another piece we're looking at, we do the instructional model survey, as you're all aware. We do it at the end of each grading cycle. So, we've done it for first and second six weeks as a secondary level. The end of the first six weeks, we had 714 kids shift models. A majority were moving from virtual to on-site, and this is grades five through 12. At the end of the second six weeks, we had 276 secondary kids make that move. So, a significant shift down. And I'll tell you what I think has contributed to that shift. The first nine weeks, 580 elementary kids made change. And again, a majority of those removed from virtual to on-site. We'll do the survey again at the close of the semester to prepare for the fourth, six weeks. If I see the movement down in numbers again, then what we'll probably do is instead of having a massive survey ever grading cycle, just let folks know to reach out to their specific principal or campus if they have a desire to change instructional models when we move into the second six weeks. So, they still have a choice, but we probably won't do it a big survey all at once. As a matter of fact, as people are contacting principals, they're kind of handling these items as they come now. It's just, really, it's easier for them to manage a few at a time as opposed to a big survey. So, I'll watch the numbers and see what type of movement we have at the end of the first semester. If it appears as though those survey responses are going down, then we'll just, we'll transition to allowing them individuals to reach out to campuses through the course of the spring instead of continuing with a big massive survey that fewer people are responding to. So, the option will still be there, we'll just change the format at which we provide it. So, lessons learned through the course of the fall semester. A couple of celebrations, and then actually, let me do upcoming events. We mentioned them all. As Grant Patrol, and earlier in workshop, we discussed a meeting with possible facilitators for our strategic planning. So, that will occur on Tuesday, December the 8th, and that will be in the timeframe between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM. But some student recognitions before I turn it back over to you, Ms. Nolan. Remember, last month, we had 16 national merit semifinals that were named. In CSISD, we've had 28 additional students recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program, whether through a letter of commendation, national Hispanic recognition, or national achievement citation. So, our kids continue to excel very well and be recognized by the National Merit Program. Congratulations to Consol's tennis team, they made it to semifinals in state, so, in Team Tennis. So, congratulations to them for their having a successful season. And I believe on Monday, I don't know if it's Monday or Tuesday of next week, our girls cross-country team at College Station High School will be running at the state meet. So, kiddos are doing a wonderful job, and we want to kind, and we want to keep that going as much as possible, provide those opportunities for our kids. So, Ms. Nolan, that is Superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Okay, that brings us to G, hearing of citizens for non-agenda and agenda items. We do have a card, so I will read the rules first. During this time, public comments are welcome on non-agenda items. The board will listen, but the Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers. Please complete the note card and give it to the executive assistant. The public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone, regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The board asks that those addressing the board refrain from derogatory comments. Dr. Monica Brown.
Hey, Monica, come over here, that microphone's not acting right. If you don't mind, please.
That's okay, right?
There you go.
My name is Monica Brown, and I'm a local dentist in the community, and I have four kids in the CSISD system. I have a sophomore at Consolidated, an eighth grader at AMCMS, a seventh grader at AMCMS, and a fourth grader at Pebble Creek. My husband is a local attorney, and both of us graduated from Texas A&amp;M and then attended professional school. I feel like with our background, we have a pretty good idea about GPAs, college readiness, and being prepared for college. I am upset right now with the decision of getting rid of the honors classes on the second, at our high school level. I'm writing on behalf of those students that are in current honors courses that may fall by the wayside. While I realize that academic levels or standards may vary by teacher and at each of our CSISD campuses, I do not think this is the way to remedy the issue. There are countless students who would be bored and indifferent if they were left to have to be in a non-level course. They will be lost in the shuffle, thus dumbing down our level of education as a whole in our district. I do realize CSISD is reacting to changes coming from the College Board, but in visiting with administrators on the Texas A&amp;M campus, our students excel over those from other areas, often those with higher GPAs than coming to Texas A&amp;M. I think having the option of an honors course has allowed a huge number of students to take a higher-level English course, for example, but they do not have the rigor or workload of a pre-AP class. This has aided in higher scores on the ACT for a middle part of our population of kids. It's helped lots of children get in and be prepared for college. I have kids active in extracurricular activities, and we will have to make hard choices about extracurricular activities or being able to take pre-AP or a non-level course. I think a large portion of parents and students need to be surveyed for this. I think most people don't know that this is coming down the pike, and they do not realize that they will not have the option of taking an honors class. We have been a leader in the state with the course offerings we have and in the way we prepare students for college. Why would we want to change that? The only thing we should take a hard look at is the bump in GPA for pre-AP and honors fare. I think that everyone will agree, you should have a larger bump for the pre-AP and, versus the honors, but the honors classes are a great alternative to on-level classes. I disagree with the committee, he says our students can handle moving from honors to pre-AP classes. If you go to high school orientation in January as a ninth grader, there's very few teachers at Consolid, that recommend taking more than two pre-AP courses at a time. They say if you want to have, they recommend taking two pre-AP classes, and then if you want to have a little bit more of a challenge, take honors classes.
I would just add that we're not saying shouldn't get a bump for the AP classes, it's just that we think the honors courses serve an important purpose for the students, and we think there's a lot of parents that will probably agree with that as they begin to hear more about this. So, and we know you haven't made a decision yet, but we're just simply voicing our take on that. So, thank you for your time.
So, that takes us to I-1, receive report on child nutrition. Mr. Martindale.
All righty. As a part of our monthly program update and reports, we have Ms. Goodlett, Bridgette Goodlett, our Director of Child Nutrition Services, will share an update on child nutrition department. Mrs. Goodlett?
Good evening. So, tonight, we are going to talk about child nutrition services. And in my overview on the report, sorry, in my overview on the report, sorry, I'm a mover. We're going to talk about staffing, the programs that we're operating, which is very interesting this year, our budget, and then our program challenges. All right. So, in child nutrition, we employ about 125 people. I have myself plus three additional professionals in the office. I would like to highlight this child nutrition supervisor position. I reorganized a position that became available this fall and changed it into a child nutrition supervisor position, which was filled by Rachel Higgs in September. Rachel Higgs joined the child nutrition staff as a child nutrition assistant, a cafeteria person, in 2012. She quickly became a child nutrition manager at Creekview Elementary. She moved over to Cypress Grove Intermediate to manage that kitchen as soon as it became available. She opened Pecan Trail Intermediate School when it was first built, and now has worked her way up into this child nutrition supervisor position where one of the qualifications was five years of child nutrition management in a cafeteria. So, she has done an amazing job with her insight on doing all of our purchasing, making sure our bid pricing is correct, all of our Buy American for our USDA goods and new employee training. All right. We have several paraprofessionals in our office as well, and then Consuelo Solano, who's an auxiliary employee in my office, who takes care of vending and catering. Each campus has a state-certified food service manager, and then their staffing of their employees depends upon their meal participation. There is a formula based on the number of breakfasts, the number of lunches, and the number of extra snacks, extra burgers, extra slices of pizza that they sell each day, that earns them the number of employee hours that they are awarded to run their kitchen. And granted, you have to have so many employees to be able to make it through the day. And so, all elementaries mostly have four, intermediates have five, middle schools, six, and Consol and College Station High School both have a manager, an assistant manager, and an additional 14 employees. All right. The programs that we operate, in a non-COVID school year, we would run national school breakfast and national school lunch from August through May. This school year, we began that way and ran those two programs, August, September, and October. Effective November 1st, we changed to a summer feeding program that I'll cover a little bit later in my presentation. We also do catering for district events. We manage vending machines within our district buildings. The national school lunch and breakfast program, this is the average meals that we were serving per day, August through October, about 1,800 breakfasts and 5,100 lunches each day. This was quite a bit less than what we had served daily last year, about 800 breakfasts less and about 1,400 lunches less each day. Before COVID, so this is August through the beginning of March, last year, we served almost 300,000 breakfasts and almost 850,000 lunches to the students of CSISD. We were well on our way to serving over a million lunches prior to our closure. And then, not only do we sell those meals, but students can also purchase milk and other food items that are available for the meals as extras or à la carte, and then we also have snacks and drinks available for them. Of course, we have our child nutrition employees who eat with us daily, breakfast and lunch, but we also have about 45 adults throughout the district who purchase a meal from us each day. All right. Meal service during COVID. So, this is what we began once school closed in March. So, we decided that we would open up curbside feeding the Monday after spring break. When we initially started that, we opened that up under the summer meal program. When you switch to this, this is a program that is designed to function whenever you have a unanticipated school closure. So, this is not something that you would normally run any other time during a normal school year. And in this program, you are telling the government that you have a community need to take care of people, and anyone in your community, age 1 to 18, is able to take advantage of these free meals without any proof of identity, where they live, who they are. They just show up, you see them in the car, and you provide them a meal. So, we served daily at the beginning. Mid-April, we decided to change that to bulk meals, where they still receive five breakfasts and five lunches each week, but we served on Mondays and Thursdays. And that was to help decrease the exposure of our child nutrition staff to the public and have the public out and about less and waiting in lines less for those meals. So, our total for March through August of those meals was about 112,000 breakfasts and 113,000 lunches. So, some Thursdays, when we were giving three breakfasts and three lunches, we would serve about 13,000 meals in an hour and a half throughout the district. Let Whataburger try that. All right. So, November 2020, this is a huge change, which we advertised to our community. In October, USDA extended that federal summer meal program through the end of this school year, and we became eligible to participate in that. Beginning on November 1st, we announced that any child enrolled in CSISD, no matter what campus you were on, you were eligible to receive a breakfast and a lunch at no charge. And this is funded by the federal government. When you run this program, you are saying, again, you have a community need. So, a requirement is that you open up and feed the community at some of your schools that are at least 50% free or reduced, because those are the areas in need or in a feeder patterned school. So, we currently have College Hills, A&amp;M Consolidated High School is open as well, using South Knolls Information, Southwood Valley, and Riverbend. Since we have done this change, we have seen our numbers at curbside go from about 40 a day to, today, we did 110. But we're not seeing just people from the community with no ties to the district who are taking advantage of this. We are seeing those students who were coming to pick up meals for virtual students, but now had siblings that were under school age that are now, oh, I can get a lunch too and a breakfast. And then, we're having students who used to have to pay for meals, who did not take advantage of that curbside, who are coming as well. On our enrolled students that are actually in the building, immediately the first week, we saw an average of 475 additional breakfasts each day, 900 the first week, we saw an average of 475 additional breakfasts each day, 925 lunches. I ran the numbers yesterday for last week, our second week. We're at over 800 breakfasts every day additional and 1,300 lunches. And so, we can expect it to continue to climb, and I am working very hard to hire additional staff to be able to take care of the increased demand for meals. Okay. What are the benefits of this, the summer program, and why would we take advantage of it? Well, of course, we're going to take advantage. One reason is every student receives a free breakfast or a free lunch. We're taking care of our community because any child, age 1 to 18, can come and receive meals for free. But for the child nutrition, financial benefit is also there. We receive a free reimbursement rate for every meal that's served, and when you're under the summer meal program, it's even more money than you get from reimbursement from the government for national school breakfast and national school lunch. So, we get an additional 11 cents over what we would have received in the other program for breakfast and an additional 64 cents per lunch for every student who comes through and gets a lunch under the summer program. An example of how much reimbursement we would have received in addition to what we did, if we would have been in this program in August, September, and October, is $183,000. And so, using our average meals for August, September, and October and running those through November through May, we should receive at least an additional $544,000 in reimbursement. And that doesn't account for our uptick in kids coming through for meals. And one of the things that I did not have on this slide that is also a great benefit is if you look at the numbers that parents paid for reduced and paid meals, it's around $130,000 a month that came out of parents' pockets. And so, that's able to stay with them for other needs and go into the local economy. All right. So, what's the big difference between these two programs? When you're national school breakfast and school lunch, you're accepting meal applications. Children have an eligibility of free, reduced, and paid. When you're under the summer program, all kids eat for free as long as they're within the correct age group. Everything else is the same. We're following nutrition guidelines. We're using commodities, proper sanitation, record-keeping, financial requirements, and we're operating on the nonprofit basis. We're doing these wonderful menu requirements. I'd like to go over them real quickly. Maximum calories, whole grain items, vegetable subgroups. Milk is, must be 1% or less if it is white. If it's flavored, it has to be fat-free. There's sodium restrictions, fat restrictions, sugar restrictions. But we try to offer students foods that they love and they recognize, but are a healthier version and in the proper portion sizes for their age group. Smart snacks. You'll see snacks on our lines that we do offer to schools, but they, again, are subject to very rigorous nutrition guidelines for serving size, calories, sodium, fat, and sugar limits. And this is for anything that is sold to students during the school day, and the state considers the school day midnight to 30 minutes after the dismissal bell. So, if it's in a vending machine, if it's a fundraiser, if it's in the cafeteria or school store, it has to follow those guidelines. We also take care of students who have special dietary needs. They must have a physician's note that states they have a life-threatening food allergy or a disability. We currently have about 45 students that we prepare a different meal for each day. Gluten-free, soy-free, egg-free are just some examples. One of my coordinators is a dietitian. She works very closely with the physician, the parents, the nurses, and my staff to make sure that these kids are taken care of. All right. Free and reduced meal applications. This is, again, part of more of the national school breakfast and school lunch. Children in households that qualify for food stamps, temporary assistance for needy families, foster children, homeless children can automatically qualify for free meals if the proper paperwork is submitted. One of the great things that has come down in the last few years is called direct certification. This happens at the beginning of every month where we take CSISD's entire enrollment. We upload it to the Texas Department of Agriculture, and they match students in their system that are already on food stamps or qualify for Medicaid in some sort. So, they already have filled out all the paperwork to qualify for some government assistance. So, then they are matched and then sent to our software system and are automatically coded as free or reduced without any parent having to fill out the meal application. And another great benefit is if we identify one child who lives in a house that did download as free, but the other three siblings did not, we can extend those benefits to anyone that is under that same roof. Other households may qualify by income, and that is using that free and reduced meal application. A small percentage of those applications are selected each year to be verified, and we just finished that on November 15th. And why do we want these applications? Well, percentages of free and reduced students are the basis of many state and federal programs and how the district defines the economically disadvantaged. And a question that we receive a lot now that we've changed to everyone eating for free is why is it important to still complete those applications? Well, we want those applications because free and reduced numbers are used to calculate your state comp ed education allotment funds for the district. Free and reduced eligibility can also qualify people for discounts for tests or Kids Club, and then that eligibility will also roll over to next school year for the first 30 days. So, student, parents and students don't have to worry about that at the beginning of next school year. We also take care of catering and vending. We provide Kids Club snacks daily. Last year, we did about 140,000. We take care of Head Start snacks as well. Every Head Start kid gets a snack every day from us, fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, yogurt, four times a week. And then, we also have our vending machines, the high school operation, and transportation department. All right. Child nutrition budget. I did not use 1920 budget. It wasn't very pretty. So, I did go back to 1819 where our budget was a little over $6 million. We operate on a nonprofit basis. All revenue goes back into our child nutrition funds, and then any of that that's there is used to buy equipment, replace things that do break. Our goal is to use no local funds with the exception of COVID. Due to the pandemic and school closure, CARES Act money was used to supplement us in 1920. So, our revenue comes from three different sources. 54% comes from the federal reimbursement that we get for feeding children, and I've listed what we, the money we get for a free breakfast and lunch, a reduced breakfast and lunch, and a paid breakfast and lunch from the federal government. 42% comes from parents' pockets. This is what they pay when their children come through and buy a lunch or any additional snack or à la carte items. And then, 4% of our revenue comes from catering and vending. Expenditures. 47% is spent on food costs, 45% on salary and benefits, and 8% on other expenses, cleaning, paper supplies, employee uniforms, training, and et cetera. Large equipment for each new school is included in the bond packages, and we are very grateful for that, and replacement of old equipment is paid for by child nutrition. Just a few challenges that we live through on a routine basis is balancing student preference, healthy meals, and federal requirements, and food cost, feeding a large number of students in a short amount of time while maintaining great customer service, forecasting the amount of food to prepare each day, which has been a lot of fun the past two weeks, replacing aging equipment as needed, staff turnover, and of course, meal service during COVID. Any questions?
You did a good job staying by the microphone.
I tried.
So, I just want to say that this is always very informative. Thank you. And it's so weird that my back is to you. And I, I know that all the, the work that you've put into, I'm sure there's been paperwork involved with, with all of the COVID, and we appreciate that. And I know that that has been a huge blessing to so many families in our community. So, thank you for putting that extra effort in. And I know that y'all were, y'all were hawking food. Man, I got to volunteer one day early on and help, and it was non-stop. But it was, it was so nice to be able to, to give all that food to families. And you mentioned, you mentioned something about Whataburger, Do That Whataburger, which is funny that you said that because I was thinking, I just recently listened to a podcast, and they said, you know, schools, schools do all these things, and one of them is feed thousands of kids every day. And they actually said something like that, you know, Do That Whataburger. But then, and I did have one question, but then you ended up answering it. I was going to ask if all of this change in the free lunches has needed, has required you to hire more? And you did answer that.
And we are very fortunate. The applicants are there, and Human Resources is doing a great job of getting them turned around as soon as possible.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any?
Just to follow up on that question, it sounds like those, those new hires will be able to be funded through the extra money that you're bringing in.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds great.
So, they should pay for themselves.
Obviously, yeah. You, as much as any of the organizations without the school, you guys have had to react and adapt to all this COVID so much. So, so, thank you. When you were saying a couple of things, was every school district officially eligible for this program, and we just had to decide if we were going to do it, or what made us eligible or not?
They changed the rules on this so many times. And so, finally in October, when they said, we're going to do this, it's going to last through the end of the school year. And then, we looked into it more and found out that if at least one of your schools was over 50% free and reduced, then you were eligible to loop in with all of the proper application and waivers. And when I finally found someone with the correct answer, she says, Bridgette, you would not have been able to do this two weeks ago. You better go, go, go. And I had four days before the deadline at that point. So, yes, it was, they changed it every week.
Thanks for being on top of it. I mean, I obviously had some benefit to so many, so many people. But it's interesting, you mentioned the free and reduced lunch numbers, and I'm glad you did mention that because we do use them for lots of, those numbers for lots of other things. So, just curious if you could comment on, I mean, I'm assuming most of those are decided near the beginning of the school year. So, but, I mean, how accurate are, do you, are our free and reduced numbers going to be this year when we look at those?
They were higher than, they were higher in August and September because those children rolled over for the first 30 days. So, we are now chasing those that fell off on September the 30th, working on getting them to complete the application. So, our numbers are currently down. We just did a reference that today, but that is everywhere, not just here. But we are encouraging them as much as possible to go ahead and complete that information. And then, we are cross-referencing in each school in our system, every guardian of every child who downloaded as free and reduced, and every address from the state to see if there are any additional matches in our district that we can code them by extending benefits without that other application, trying to drive the numbers up that way as well.
Well, thank you. Thanks for all that it worked to get, to have them accurate, right? We want accurate.
Yes, we want accurate information.
Okay, now I'm going to ask one other question, and this one's one because I only started thinking about this as I got a teenage boy. And do you have a feel for how many, especially high school kids, I mean, you did the money on the, how much of your revenue is for the main meals? And are, is a free and reduced, is one school, high school lunch enough food for a, a high school student? I guess that's what I'm getting at. And I was particularly concerned about it before. They were, you know.
I can answer that, yes.
Well, we have to understand that the guidelines that they give us are not specific for a freshman girl versus a senior football player, boy. It is an average of what their needs are. And so, sometimes I think it's, it's a lot for some kids, but we're meeting the guidelines, and we are often over, we're exceeding their calorie level. That is the requirement. Now, I don't know that it meets the needs of someone who just left football practice, but we're, we're meeting the guidelines that are there. I think there's an abundance of food if they take advantage of everything that's offered, from the entree to all of the vegetables, the sides, the fruit, the milk. I don't think they would have much problem meeting their needs for the average high school student.
And again, I'm thinking, again, not about my high schooler that eats so much, but about the kid who was getting a free and reduced lunch, right? And then, is that enough food for them, or do we need to?
I, I think, I feel comfortable that it is as long as they're taking everything, and they're not just grabbing the burger and the apple, but if they're grabbing everything that's available for them. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to thank you for this comprehensive report and all that you and your staff have done and are doing for our students. Thank you.
Very welcome. I have amazing staff. They have done wonderful things on a quick turnaround and just very impressed with their eagerness and willingness to, to do anything we ask.
Well, and you, and doing it with a smile. I think we heard from a parent during the pandemic that just brightened their day. So.
Did they go to Riverbend because they were dressing up for Christmas in July?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure which school, but thank you.
Well, just an odd comment. One thing that I noticed was missing when you were talking about the catering that y'all do, y'all cater for us, and it is amazing, and I miss it.
That's our special Consuelo. She takes amazing care.
She really does. So, thank you. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Goodlett.
Y'all are very welcome.
Okay, that takes us to personnel, J-1. Consider approval of a new administrator contract as recommended by the superintendent of schools. And we will be looking for a motion in a second on this one. Mr. Martindale?
I thought you were just about to do it, Ms. Snowman, with that.
Hi, Ed.
Go ahead. No, I would like to recommend Ms. Tiffany Parkinson for the position of Executive Director of Secondary Education. Ms. Parkinson started her career, I believe, or started in College Station ISD in 2003 as a teacher at A&amp;M Consolidated High School, transitioned over as department chair and instructional coach and English teacher at College Station High School, and we opened campus there. During her teaching time, she was recognized as College Station ISD Teacher of the Year on two separate occasions. Ms. Parkinson has also served as Assistant Principal at College Station High School and has spent the last five years serving as principal and trying to clean up the mess the previous principal left there at College Station High School. Took you five years to clean it up after me, right? So, with Tiffany's background, from an instructional standpoint, of course, her administrative experience as, as a campus principal, she will prove to be a tremendous asset, which she is now at College Station High School. In this new role, it allows her the opportunity to touch all of our secondary campuses and provide guidance and mentoring to our, our sitting secondary principals, as well as direction and consistency with our curriculum instructional pieces at the secondary level as well, and some administrative things as they come along. So, it is my pleasure to recommend Tiffany for this position.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve a new administrator contract as recommended by the superintendent of schools for, to Tiffany Parkinson as Executive Director of Secondary Education.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
As the parent of a freshman at College Station High School, I oppose this.
I think this is going to be a fantastic move.
Let me, let me just make comment on that.
Just for the record.
I will tell you, as I mentioned to that faculty and staff last week, it, we will assure in this transition process, Ms. Parkinson and myself, that we absolutely have a top-notch person to fill her shoes there at College Station High School. And her transition to central office will not occur until that takes place at an acceptable level.
I have no qualms whatsoever.
Still, thank you for the reassurance.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Just a quick comment that, I mean, I think we're always very careful about looking at adding and growing the administration numbers, but I, I do think at this point, this is very, very warranted. I mean, we have been lean in, in a lot of our upper administration, and also, I mean, we've grown so much, right? We have a lot of schools now. We have 19 schools. So, I think this is a. So I think this is a, a needed position and also feel like we've, we've made a good choice on who to put in that position.
And I'll reference back to the administrative cost ratio that Mr. Laster shared with us in our first report and give you an indication of.
Any more discussion? Questions? Mr. Nugent, you look like you're about to say something. No?
I have nothing.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, that takes us to Business, K1. Consider adoption of the resolution stating the Board of Trustees has reviewed the district's investment policies, investment strategies, and approved the brokerage list. Mr. Martindale.
It's required on annual basis that the board review the policy governing our investment practices and adopt resolution with any recognized changes. And with that review, Ms. Tries?
Yes, thank you. Further on that, it's Policy CDA Local and the Public Funds Investment Act that govern all government agencies or municipalities their investments. So as Mr. Martindale said, one of those requirements is that the governing body annually review the investment policy and acknowledge that with any changes with a resolution. So we and the Business Office and Administration have reviewed the investment policy, the local policy. There were no legal changes. And so when we review it, we're also not recommending any changes to our local policy. It's all still in compliance, and it follows the investment strategies and guidelines that we in College Station ISD have been following. So we have no changes. So after you have reviewed it, if you don't, we ask for your approval on the resolution that was attached.
So moved. Unless you need a more formal.
No.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
I wanted to second that motion. I like it.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay. That takes us to L1, Facilities. Consider the approval of the purchase and installation of playground equipment for Southwood Valley Elementary and South Knoll Elementary from Heartland Park and Recreation LLC through the TIPS Purchasing Cooperative at a cost of $139,610 utilizing 2015 bond funds. Mr. Martindale.
With more details associated with this recommended purchase of playground equipment for Southwood Valley and South Knoll, we have our Executive Director of Facilities, Mr. John Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Ms. Nolan, members of the board. It's with great pleasure that, that I am presenting two playground replacement projects for your consideration this evening. One for Southwood Valley Elementary School and one for South Knoll Elementary School. So back in November 2015, I always go back to this when y'all have heard me say it over and over, but the, the voters of College Station ISD passed a bond package for $135.9 million for new construction and renovation to district facilities. About a year ago, we completed all of those projects that had been identified in that bond package, and we entered bonus time. We're picking up bonus projects. So we've been able to go back and pick up with our savings additional projects throughout the school district. One of the projects that was identified many years ago that we were hoping we could get to was for the replacement of some of these old playground facilities at our two oldest schools, at Southwood Valley and South Knoll. We didn't have the, the full funding to do it last year, but we knew we could get started on it. So what we did is last summer, we took three bids, ultimately chose Heartland Park and Recreation LLC to accomplish the demolition of the old equipment and the replacement of about 25% of it. So we were able to successfully accomplish that at both of these two elementary schools with hopes that we could identify some more funding this year. Now that we have identified some more funding from the 2015 bond to cover the rest of the playground equipment, we would like to complete the replacement with Heartland Park and Recreation LLC because they designed the overall plan for us. And they are also a member of a purchasing cooperative that we use frequently. Each of these two individual schools would cost $69,805 to complete for a grand total of $139,610. So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees of College Station Independent School District consider approval of the proposal to purchase replacement playground equipment for Southwood Valley Elementary School and South Knoll Elementary School from Heartland Park and Recreation LLC for $139,610 utilizing 2015 bond funds. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You said there was three bids, and ultimately Heartland was selected.
Yes, sir.
What was the criteria for selecting them over the other two? Just curious.
Well, first of all, price. But, but also the, the quality of the product, product that they put forth ultimately. We've used Heartland in the past, and we know that they provide a very high-quality product. And so we felt that they were, in addition to being the, the best cost, they also provided the best value for the district.
Thank you.
That's a great question. Do they also have like a warranty on their equipment?
They do provide a warranty, yes.
I'm just going to say that I, I love that our district values renovating and, and keeping up our older campuses. And this is just another example of that. So I'm thankful that, that, you know, we make that, we always, we remember to make that a priority as well. Do we have any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the playground equipment for Southwood Valley and South Knoll Elementary.
We have a motion. Do you have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, so M1. The Board will now meet an executive session to discuss qualifications of new board, new executive board nominees. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the Personal Matters Closed Meeting Exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. So we will move to closed session and then come back to open session. And there, there will be a vote at that time. Okay, calling us back in session. We have returned. So we're back in open session. Do I have to say a quorum of seven again? No, I don't have to do all that, do I?
No, you don't have to call.
Okay. So N1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding the Reorganization of Board Officers. Is there any discussion?
I nominate Mr. Nugent as President to the Board, Ms. Nolan as Vice President, and Mr. Horak as Secretary.
We have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And it is, do I have to say what time? It is 9:26, and we are adjourned.